Because you all have the same schedule. If you look at the wages, they're all pretty much the same. I don't know what the difference is in that one that the appraiser is. I don't know if they're out there field work, if they're doing other work or what. But if you're talking about creating a problem now every other office that has somebody that's making the fourteen seventy-five, they should be in there asking for the same thing. And that, you know, for a dollar an hour, that's pretty tough to do with what we've just done. And I like Shannon personally, and all that.
Yes.
You still have to do what's right.
But she has done excellent job.
Sure.
And she's helped out, and I've sent her over to help out.
And I agree with all of that.
How long is she here?
It's only for six months.
Ten months, eight, nine months, nine or ten months.
And I do have it in the budget for this. You didn't go up for dollars. How about fifty?
Well, she's got to get fifty cents here pretty quick because her one-year raise comes up.
Yeah. That being said, if she's that close to her year, then she's already going to get fifty.
Fifty.
Yeah. Because I understand, but at the same time, you know, each office is a little bit different, and they do need some expertise. You say she's going to train in the new passports.
Uh huh, uh huh. She, she, she has picked up very good, good. She does everything. I mean, we don't, in my office, we basically do, I treat the trade to do everything in there. So we don't have anybody slap time or anything. They, where differences, the deputies can take my place and do my deposits and all that. But she knows everything in that office and except passports. And she is going to take the training with that.
But she's looking at merit increases in two months, or a year increase in two months. I don't have any problems with her when I put the separate and move that.
Okay.
Just bringing that up too. I don't have any issues in that. If she's earning at that, and everybody feels that that's okay. I just don't want, you know, her two months coming back and everything. You know?
Yeah.
You know? I don't have any issue with doing that. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think it should wait. If we're going to do merit increases, then it should occur at the time. Otherwise, then other people. Because we don't have a system in place that causes a lot of chaos. But like she said, the directors don't really have a directive of how to go.
Well, they do.
And so then, so then they're looking at other offices and going, well, they just got hired, and they're making more than my girl who's been here for longer. And so, you know, we have merit increases that, I guess, happen. But then other times, people are coming in and saying, well, they're getting paid more than I want.
Well, it used to be we were all here about the same one time for a whole office.
Again, for me, where I think a graded pay scale for each position that's here, then you have your ranges and then those individuals.
If you look at this one again, look at the appraiser's office again that you handed me. It looked gone. You got yours, so look at the...
Those offices do have graded pay scales.
If you look at the last one.
And they've all been directed.
They have the same position as what's in here. So the position you've selected out is not the same position.
There's somebody that has a year that falls in the middle of the year. That's a little different. Just like Sheriff said, step increases, you know, if a step increases falls in July, that's the hard part of changing. That's not going to change overnight. But, you know, do you guys have a pay schedule in your office?
Not actually a pay schedule, no, we never have. It's, it's been, but...
There's been an agreed to, not agreed to, no paperwork. Because I, I, everybody in this courthouse has a pay scale, I can assure you of that.
It is, yeah.
And it shows you have a first deputy, a second deputy, and then your other staff members. And that's why I'm saying, when I look at this one, I see what you're talking about. But then also, if you look back at the appraisers office, you selected one person, but you didn't select their entry level person because their entry level person is making the exact same wage. That started at the same time. They started in September. So there, there's a different position. I don't know what it is. But yeah, the, the year increase, I get that when that comes up, and then I have no problem with that because that's the way it's always been, is we've had the one-year increase. But the other one, I don't know the answer to what the other gal does, but I, it's not...
No, I'm not positive.
Well, I don't think she doesn't field work in the appraiser's office specifically.
But if I go through the list of what you're talking about right now, there's going to be several people that will be back in there next week because they're almost a year up also. So Heather's probably right on, you have to do it when the year comes. In other words, you have, everybody's back again saying the same thing. And it just creates a, a level of, it creates, it does exactly what we don't want to do, and it creates... But I will do some research on that myself.
Okay, yeah, because I don't know what she does unless it's field work.
And I don't either, so...
And that's why, who was it going to go for the, you know, because she'd be outside and all that. But I did not come in and ask for any raises for Shannon like I should have.
And from the beginning of the year?
Well, no, from her step raise.
Well, her step raise is just coming up, is that correct?
Yes, I, I think that's...
Right, that's the one that's coming up in, in June.
There used to be after they were here, like three months, six months, and they'd be, you'd come in and...
So since I've been here, it's been a year, I know. But I, I don't know what it, I mean, but we've done the raises without that because we've done the fifty cents every six months. So that she's already received, so...
I say bring it back in the two months.
In the two months?
Her year is up, bring it back.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Could you give a little break?
I said, I have a dress.
And then even that, Booker looking in our feed. Quick.
Show that to Heather. I don't want her to think I'm showing you something she doesn't see. But it is every...
I think she's still in shock because she said you agreed with her, said Heather was right.
I think Heather and I agree probably on eighty-five to ninety percent of the things. We probably agree on a hundred percent of things, it's just different how we get there.
Yeah. Yeah. As you go by. Brett, can you hear me?
I have a selection, I respond to.
Matt Booker.
I said, I'm listening.
Hello?
I said, I'm listening.
There's your tab off.
He was wonderful. Went to Boston on a school trip.
That is cool.
The last one.
Hello, tomorrow.
There comes a bunch of quackers.
Did I miss what ends with, or what's his name?
Oh yeah, you were in there for the...
I'm actually still at the office people's place.
Okay, so I just have a couple things. Um, we've got two in the NRP for twenty twenty-three. Um, and then I have a question about one other one, and I forgot that file, so I apologize. I just got from the service. So these are the two that are completed for twenty twenty-three that need your guys' signature. Actually, the two are mine, I guess. And then Michelle's signature. So that's the two.
These are a hundred percent built and open, right or old?
Um, the one was Robert Burner's, or, sorry. That was about that was sixty-seven percent done, completed, that would let him choose.
So with these, I don't know the full process, but once they're finished, the appraiser goes out and does their assessment.
We've already done that part.
And then they met all the criteria for whatever that might be.
Yes, yes.
And so this is just the final paperwork that says they're officially in the program, and they'll get their tax abatements from the NRP. So does the ten years start from the time of this, or does a ten-year start?
To the, to the probation.
Does the ten years start from the time of this signing, or does the ten years start from the time they started their process?
It will start from the first.
The first distribution, so like, you know, you pay your property taxes a year behind.
Okay.
So...
Built in for twenty twenty-three until thirty thirty-three. My math is off.
Like this needs a...
Right, I got that. You guys need to be quicker than I, I just got down back in the office.
She's all up. Laura trying to explain everything to me.
So we just sign off on it?
Mm-hmm, and that is it.
Do you want that back?
We, yeah, I will get that back after we sign that, and then Michelle will sign in. And the other issue with that, um, the twenty-five dollar admin fee, um, that is supposed to come off every year. Michelle and I had meetings, the IC, or we were trying to get through how to add all the units in. We are unable to put that twenty-five dollar admin fee in there because we're at a hundred percent. And you have to have a percentage of that to pull that fee. Am I saying that correctly? So we're unable to, so I don't know what can be done to collect that fee.
So what's the, tell me what that is, because I'm not...
So what we have is a hundred and twenty-five dollar application fee. And then every year, you are supposed to pay a fee to stay in the program for twenty-five dollars. And we can't take that twenty-five dollars out because in the wording, it says that it's a hundred percent rebate, so...
But it's only a hundred percent rebate on the increase.
Yes, but if you're taking twenty-five dollars out of that, then it's not a hundred percent.
And they have to have a percentage.
They can't come and pay it separately.
So did you call the state and ask them a solution around that?
Yep, I, we kind of did, found out Friday.
So they're supposed to, they're supposed to pay twenty-five dollars a year to stay in the program. Why don't they just come in and pay a separate check?
I don't know, talk to her about it, but this was just, yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
So they pay it here, then we refund it. So I would call the state and ask them how you do that. Because there's got to, we're not the only place in the country that's done this.
So you were going to give the rebate minus twenty-five dollars?
Yeah.
You just got to do it the other way, just have a...
Well, even if we have them, because they're supposed to send the form in to the treasurer, so we had those in and a payment with that form.
You may have to create, I don't know if you already have a form for that, but you may have to create an additional form that gets filled out each year.
And we could just add it to that.
Say, kind of, we just sort of brings, part of this. We just found out, I just want it to be addressed, so everyone is aware that that is a situation we have that is supposed to fix yet, I guess. Whether we needed to, we can do that, we can...
Yeah, we just a base check, a little disventure, that's acceptable. But yeah, it sounds like just, uh, sending a check or writing a check.
I will fill rest of that out though, because I was...
Well, I was just curious. My dad at the bottom, he says a real set of data that we don't have to, you know, maybe do that. It's just, you need to have a parcel under tax year and stuff.
Right, yeah, I have a, you need to add that, sorry.
With that being said, then I will move to furthering two neighbor们的 revitalization program rebate applications brought forth by Michelle Brooks. And Patricia Lynn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
So how many other open applications do we have that, where they're not finished? Because these would have been ones that applied in twenty-three.
So these being they're finished, they're moved into their houses, not, so not necessarily just applied. I mean, because it makes sound, it's an application, these are done.
Mm-hmm, completed, all of that.
So do they also, at some point in time, is there a certificate of occupancy handed out with those?
Um, she provides that for the final, they have a copy of that. That process that you know...
So the ones that are in towns, when they're done, do we see those paperwork too?
Yes, they've been reported. Everyone's, but Intranet has been out on, we've been data collecting for up to date pictures. Hopefully, for us, there one. I do have the other one that we talked about, um, in Music City. So that is complete, and that is one we have questioned for a level, which mainly I think is out of control. We should just make for, I think, life easier with what we're at right now. And then I give a copy to, um, Michelle, do you want a copy of this as well? Okay. So I'll give one to Laura as well, so I'll have that.
Thank you.
Did you get a proper installation of that?
Oh, not for you. That's you.
So these ducks just appeared throughout, randomly throughout the courthouse. I believe that you guys may have had some with notes.
Might have had some.
Some with notes on them.
Oh, yeah.
And then I believe somebody was gifted some more ducks this weekend through the garage sales.
Would you please instead of, would you bring us something that's edible?
Edible?
Duck, exactly.
Are there significance to this, or just this is just fun?
Just fun. Watching ladies run around.
Is it?
Different color, or...
Take the last one, but I will.
No, you're fine. If it keeps you happy, we're good. Hey, that's true. Brett, Brett Rose. Pauline Brett Rose. Did he respond?
He was in here earlier, when the meeting starts, he disappears.
I think at this time, since he is not present, we have a few minutes before we can open and seal bids, I will move to enter into executive session with all three commissioners and Michelle under the non-elected personnel clause.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Ryan Levy, tab keeper. Maybe. Maybe.
The farm, right, yeah?
Um, six months?
Huh?
Six months, okay.
Yeah, that much time, if we have to...
Get that thing around.
Okay.
Now I should take the executive session.
I have a comment. So, I came out of executive session because I believe the items discussed were not, um, non-elected personnel. Apparently, um, the person that we use for IT services doesn't have any particular contract with the county, I was unaware of that, um, I think it's been discussed in the last week or so. Um, so, there's discussions on how we want to move forward with that, and that needs to be done in an open session on how we're gonna proceed with that. But also, there's been a different company or a different person that has came in and helped Michelle on some items, I don't know if it helped any other departments. Um, that's not anything I'm aware of either, I don't know if the commission has discussed it, but we don't have any agreement with this other company, um, any charges would have to be approved by us. And then I guess apparently this person or company hasn't charged us or isn't going to charge us, and I'm uncomfortable with all of that. So, I don't know how we want to proceed with this, but that is why I left the executive session. They were not employees of the county, so they don't have the protections of non-elected personnel, they're people, I guess, who don't have any contracts with us, um, I, I don't even know where to go with all this, so...
Uh, to your point, the reason that that was taken back to the executive session was to kind of, uh, protect the current issue that we have with an employee in our IT department, as not to, uh, try to offend this person or whatnot, and give some backstory to the commissioners. Uh, we do have, uh, every intention of visiting out here in the public forum in regards to our IT needs. I just felt that you guys should be brought up to speed on some of the things that we have found over this time. Uh, we also, some of these elected offices, I think you forget that they are that, they are elected, and when they have a need, they have the duly, uh, elected right and responsibility to find someone to, to facilitate those needs. So, uh, this was talked about a little bit in the previous meeting, and regardless if the commissioner's here or not, the world does not stop turning, business will continue on. I expect the same if I'm gone from a meeting, and you two are the only ones here. Uh, one thing I will not do is come in here and essentially throw a fit because I was not privy to something that happened in previous meeting when someone was attempting to make said person privy to that information, to my previous meeting. Uh, I do not appreciate that, uh, that was every intention to not do anything illegal or violate any fora or coma meeting, uh, regulations, rules. Uh, so, that was all done with best intentions, if you're not, if you're not comfortable with that, I really do apologize, uh, that was intent.
But if we have an individual or company coming in and working on county equipment, and it's not anything where they have any sort of contract with us or their employee, I don't know how they have access to the county files, documents.
You know what they have access to, Heather, and you're making allegations about something you have no clue about. And I would advise you to do a little research prior to making these allegations, excuse me, and I'm more than comments. I would ask that you please take a little time and just do a little bit of research outside of this meeting to find out what is going on. And I'd be more than happy to visit with you on who this person is and why this person got here. Uh, again, this person, there was a need within the county that needed to be facilitated in the time and manner, the people that we currently use were not doing it, so we reached out to another company. We didn't just find someone off the street that has no idea what they're doing.
And that was approved in the meeting to use this?
Doesn't have to be through a clerk's office, it was her need, she is the county clerk, and she has every right to reach out and do that without your permission, so I apologize again.
These are IT needs, and this is county equipment, this is county equipment and county information.
You have the first clue of that stuff, Heather, so again, I would implore you to visit with Michelle.
Was there a contract with this company or?
Contact Michelle and visit with her. We don't need to hash this out anymore, contact Michelle and visit with her. Instead of sitting here trying to make the rest of us look bad, visit with Michelle. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Bailey?
I would say, again, as an elected official, when they, they recognize they need something, they shouldn't wait on us if it's a, if a glaring need they need right away, they need to get it handled. Um, that comes with the position, and I think one of the things is people need to realize, as a commissioner, we don't have the authority to do everything in the county. We, we have the authority to delegate, we have the authority over non-elected offices, but not over elected offices, and if there's a need, maybe had we done this before, we wouldn't have the problems we got in the treasurer's office if we'd have kept our handprints out of that. So again, I think this is the way you get it handled, uh, I have no problem with that, if somebody believes we did something wrong, I'm more than happy to talk about it. If we're gonna talk about that, we're gonna talk about a lot of things that have been discussed in, uh, non-elected, whatever you call those, that should never have been back, including some things that just happened recently, still, if we want to open up that county, we want to do that, but again, we're here to help the people of this H County, and I'm sorry that I've hazered them a little bit, but the biggest deal is we have to do some investments for the county and help continue to support that. and I'll continue to support that.
The county is, uh, again, this farm, please.
So, then this top sheet, this is the information, correct? The rest of the product?
I have them.
This top of such kind of bid sheet, this is the only sheet with pricing. The rest is product.
Right.
Okay, so I have again this S.H. County bid sheet. Thirty percent magnesium chloride solution, due date April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, ten a.m. Good job. Uh, thirty percent magnesium chloride solution, price per gallon, a dollar forty-four per gallon, approximately twenty-eight thousand gallons. Deverge after two hours and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour. No quantities or estimated quantities, maybe more or less. Material specifications, magnesium chloride thirty percent. K dot C, K dot standard specifications, type L. Liquid with minimum concentration thirty percent is required. So, that just states at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour and a dollar forty-four per gallon of material.
Those are all those in the past.
It's a dollar forty-four last year also.
A hundred and twenty-five dollars now also?
Yeah.
So, for the people, the residents that want dust control, they can plan on it being the same amount it was last year?
Very good. So, that's what we're hoping for.
Is there a minimum or a, uh, maximum that can be purchased?
Um, there's not a maximum, but there's a minimum. Uh, it has to be three hundred feet.
No, I'm talking about for the county.
Oh.
There a matter of number of gallons?
I don't believe so. We don't do a minimum. Truckload holds anywhere between forty-three hundred and forty-six hundred gallons. So, as we get the list, we'll start to piece it together and fill out.
I think last year we had eight trucks.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Eight truckloads?
Yeah.
Too long.
It's long. Okay, with that being said, I will move to approve and accept the bid from Scottwood Industries LLC for dust control at one forty-four per gallon for material and one hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for application. Correct?
Correct. And driving correctly, I don't know, but I, we've never charged the deverge. It's never been?
Um, we've, we have never had a situation where, um, I've ever been charged a yard, um, just because of, we kind of do pretty good at scheduling, talking to the drivers and, um, planning our day.
Okay.
Where we know about how far we can get with the trucks depending on how much math we're doing. Math, maybe we have a different location. So, if we can set it up correctly where we can be more efficient, that's usually, it does you real good where you're not paying any of that deverge. That becomes a factor in us, you know? Very good. Motion's been made in second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, do you need signatures on anything? Doesn't look like it.
I don't believe so.
All right.
I would say the reason why we did that this year is because we had another company reach out too. So, they want to be part of it. And then when we, but that we need the, um, mag fluoride, non-acostium chloride product. Um, they rejected and rescinded their bid.
Okay. Good to hear.
Um, these are the bids on the two fabric buildings. Um, one fabric building.
You're first and then that's down low.
One's from K and B and one's from, um, Clerks Bay.
Which was the company that the gentleman was here being?
K and B.
And do you have the, uh, you recall what the bid was for just the fabric on the other building?
Um, just the fabric was, uh, eighty-six, I believe. Yeah, I'm just going off memory.
I seen it went up, but I see why they got a freight charge on there that wasn't there before, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the freight charge on this is for them, um, to come out, do all the work. That was just an extra thing that.
I seen that.
It was just an extra thing that was attached to the other companies.
So, is there any use at all for the old structure if you put a new structure up?
Um, probably save what called doing stuff. Because we do have another building like that, that way if, if something like on do it can, we can use that.
I must have missed this, but why are they so different?
Um, the other building is, uh, they don't offer the thirty by sixty. So, they leave a whole different building to speak.
Why'd they even bid at this? Didn't you tell them the size?
I, I did tell them the size. I told them I wanted one of their farm deck buildings and this is, they said exactly what we built over at the transfer station.
So, is the other bid what we, which is the one we need, like the size?
About thirty by sixty, that way.
And they, they bid of the other one is a larger building?
That's a complete new building though. That's all new.
That's.
Everything's new.
Everything's new. The only thing that we're reusing is our blocks that are currently in place.
Well, this isn't, they're not that much different. This bid's for thirty-five feet by sixty and the other one's thirty by sixty.
Yeah. I'm just talking about the prices so different.
Right, that's our business. That's our hit in that. The buildings aren't that much different for the price to be.
And I think they offered the same warranty too.
Yeah, this one.
That was my question, if we had a use for that other structure. Putting it up over another one that maybe doesn't have as much as in it as this one up here.
Yeah.
Because we know it's got a little tear on the back, but could you utilize that in another area?
There it is. That's, that's what we were saving some of the, um, we saved some of the whole building too. So, we might be able to make another structure up and other one.
What is that?
Scale. Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, just helping it out and look at just the, just the labor.
And that, this company comes from Garnett area and comes up and does these. Um, that, I do believe their contractor is out of Iowa. So, the people that would come in and build the one that's more expensive is they actually have.
Why didn't the company from Garnett put a bid in on the one at the landfill?
I did know they had that company. He came by one day and seen the merger and was ripped out.
So, this isn't a company we've used before. The other one is.
Yeah.
Okay.
The only difference is we.
Not even one.
We're ashamed ourselves. But that's a big deal. That's scaling wages and that makes sense why they're effective.
I'll say that again.
Yeah, and I, I believe when I purchased that building there from Clerks Bay for over the transfer station, it actually came from Connecticut, that was where it shipped from. So, these guys that I've been dealing with and their contractors are out of Iowa. So, I mean, they're all over here, you know, places. So, you're going to see that fee and the labor materials once you start, um, getting that group together to come out and do the building. And they probably have the, um, fee in there to move the blocks too.
And this one is labor included?
Thirty by sixty base. So, that's probably part of the labor and materials too. Because they're going to have to move the blocks to make the fabricer.
Am I, I was thinking this guy told us it was a forty-year warranty, but it's a twenty-year warranty though. Okay.
Oh, I think he said that they would have the issues, um, building, the building would last forty years.
Okay, maybe that's what it was.
He did have that conversation. Yeah, normally I'd be asking a lot of questions too, but I can see why they're so much different. Did you notice that?
Yeah, the labor.
Yeah. That's, that is why they're. So, what do you guys think?
This was the building that we're maybe just going to recover and then the cost of that versus new was, and the covering may only last a few years or something because of the frame or something.
Yeah, you'd try to reuse it or?
Yeah, and plus getting into there on the top side, where you can't see if something's split or rusted almost completely into, I mean, that was going to be additional stuff to that.
So, the guesstimate from last time we talked about this is about twenty-five hundred dollars more yet. But still, you're talking about, do you spend twice the amount to get a brand-new building that you don't?
What was the cost of the other one?
Eighty-seven, eighty-hundred dollars, but I don't think that had, had shipping on it or not.
No, they didn't have shipping on that.
That was, yeah, that was just a repair.
Just to cover, run the fabric.
That's what got the conversation started, is do you put a whole new structure up and then know you're covered for the twenty years? And actually, the guy, that's where he said it should last for forty years.
Yeah.
Said if we did the cover, we might get another five or six years out of what we got.
Yeah.
So, what is your preference?
I would rather just go with the new because they're, you know, it did go up a little bit on that price, but that's because of the, the shipping and everything added into that. But with that company now built, that would be us free to continue on with what we're doing.
Well, the other one for what they're going to charge, yeah, I mean, that's more to build it than what this building costs.
Yeah, we could do two for the price.
Go ahead.
I mean, to me, I, again, if you're investing something that you're going to get twenty-five, thirty years out of and you look at another one, that the guy flat told you it's worth five years. So, in five years, what do you spend again? Do you spend another ten, twelve thousand? Now, you're spending the same money that you spent just building the building.
Plus whatever it goes up to in that year.
So, with that, I would probably go with the people to put the new building up, the, this one. You want me to move to make that motion?
I was just making sure everybody was in agreement because I'm in agreement on that too. How about you, Heather? Yes, if you would like to?
I would move that we approve the bid from KB Construction Fabrication LLC out of Garnett, Kansas, in the amount of twenty thousand two twenty-six fifty to build a new, is a salt shed. I would call it a salt shed at Rodenberry Sparkling.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made in second in all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Just going to go ahead and put down the other one there.
I'll look up to him and see when he can get scheduled by twelve. Call him today once I find out where.
We'll probably need a purchase order to get it to.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
All right.
So, um, we are delayed on the two bridges, obviously, of Iron and Steel area and Carbonale area just because of the.
Water.
We've had. Um, Steve was able to get some, maybe three hauled in last week for the one on Hundred Point Fifth Street, East of Fairlawn. But it needed a lot more and it's just been a mess. I just spoke with Tom this morning before I came in to kind of see where we were sitting on that. Um, I talked to Jason last week on the block as Ian for the bridge. So, he's trying to find a window where he can get back down and we can do our final walkthrough on Bridge One Forty-Nine. Um, so we can get that to him. So, if you just still want to meet, we still need to meet with the plans on that on board, you know?
Yes.
You mentioned that.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if you're going to have any free time.
Yes, I'll learn, yeah, I should have. I, we've got, uh, appointments tomorrow, meetings, but after that, it's supposed to be raining all the rest of the week.
Okay. I have to recall some, yes. So, um, we have to do, look at something about the sign up for names.
Yes.
It's kind of like, part of the sign is in the area and part of the sign is not. So, we have to kind of make a decision on what we want to do on that. Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Really?
I was being preemptive and got a vision, however, uh, what I needed is consider privacy. So, I don't have to be doing it this time. Basically, working in a plumber, they'll be your moral, but I'll talk to that very morning. Getting that out a little later, it was like quite a, a thing to do. With some more fitting for that space.
This is the ladies restroom down here?
Yep, I'm watching the, they include the vanivies now. They're two separate vanivies. They've got them glued together. So, we're trying to take the one, make it the top off. But you'll never raise your blade next for the vanivie top.
But that's not the major problem. The major problem is you got a blockage in the drain. And we've been without the bathroom for how long?
Yeah, we.
So, I talked to him this morning about this and I, it kind of falls back on what we talked about earlier is that when an emergency comes up in the courthouse, don't wait on us.
Oh, no, we, we didn't know. I dug it out. I brought in my jackhammer and got it a little exposed Saturday. And I wasn't going to pay a ridiculous overtime weekend call for anything, you know, against work. So, I gave him this morning, but unfortunately, I was busy until tomorrow. So, but going forward, I'll just make you aware of it and just drop on it.
Yeah.
Try not to spend too many millions.
Yeah. The dutyary responsibility is the word of the day.
Right.
If you was worried about calling them on the weekend, I'm not too worried about you overspending when it comes to fixing them.
Right.
So, I respect that.
Appreciate it.
By the way, Scott at ten-thirties, um, I would like to move to take a brief recess.
What's his population though? Is that, is that man Bill?
Yeah, that's that. That was that men's health store. Yeah?
You want to knock these out real quick while you're here?
Um, okay, I was just going to move to.
That's fine.
A little restroom break.
That's fine.
Just moved in, entered recess for five minutes. So, it's that. And why is it?
I guess not.
Yeah.
Recession for a reason.
First room break. So, this would be separate for each employee. This would be running through our healthcare.
It would be like a, a list and a phone number they would read out to their sociable.
I mean, I would be capable of allowing us to give them their information, but what we do is, a lot of times we'll allow them to come to the courthouse, and then all the employees can cover physical events when they want. I have a question for that. Welcome back.
Yeah. I'm gonna talk to, um...
Dees?
Yeah, Linda. And now she, we're all on the same page now, so she's good.
Very good. Uh, did you guys have a chance for a meeting minutes?
I did.
I did, but I didn't watch the meeting, so I'll sit out on the book.
Did you find anything?
Nope.
Pretty good. Michelle, you're getting better and better. Look at you. I will move to approve the Monday, April twenty-second meeting minutes.
Sign up.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Another thing before we get to Scott, this was just dropped off with us. Chair?
I'm a little higher than they don't have.
On this one? This is...
Yeah, I can look it up.
Look, yeah. Oh.
Here's what I'm asking. There's some that must be getting behind on some of this. Oh, never mind. Oh, I was looking at some that were, I thought they were behind it. They're not. They're, they're on the same schedule. They got them all over the place. That's the...
Have any issues there?
Nope.
I will move to approve the status payroll change report brought forth by the chair. Reformulary period ending in twenty-four.
I would just say, I would need more information, I'll add, so I'll just, I've got supportive at this time, but that's why.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, you spent the money to print it and cut it?
Yeah, uh, I'm gonna review the department heads.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning.
Is this the current life insurance provider? Or somebody?
I really thought you was gonna have a bright red tie, looking handsome, looking sharp.
And what I was telling Michelle is you, we just acknowledge that coming and sent in, and people could come with it. See, that's what she passed on, her employees' information.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if they're wanting presentation to employees about their...
Okay, alright.
Ready?
We got your new microphones since last time you were here.
Oh, perfect.
Which I got a message today that it wasn't...
Yeah, he's already on it. They think that potentially the storm that blew through here may have caused some damage.
Oh. So, did you guys get quite a bit of rain? It looked like you did.
A lot.
Good, yeah.
And it was pretty widespread.
Yeah, I text my mom and my brother in Sedan, and said, you know, there's a tornado just about a mile southeast of Sedan. You guys have any idea this is going on? Uh, no, doesn't look too bad around here. Okay.
Good for them.
Yeah. Um, so what I, what I, I'm sorry for any misunderstanding, but we've never done this meeting before that I'm doing with the department heads. So, we did the training, we did that last year. But this year, Pratt City does this, and I, I do it Thursday with them, and it's a way, they do it with the city manager there, but it's a way to actually help each of the department heads maybe come up with their information, so that when we come back to the meeting with you, there will actually be, hopefully, some worked-out information that's able to even look at. So what I did, I just took the calendar in the front, 'cause I'm just gonna make sure that, you know, they knew, um, the next meeting. So like, if you look at the four-twenty-nine, that's where we're at today, and the next time we meet, I meet with you, is six-three, June third. And on May nineteenth and May twenty-sixth, that would be the due dates of both the outside agencies and the inside departments to have their information into Michelle. And then on third, that's when we would go through and meet with each one of them and discuss them and make any notes of changes. And then I would take that information, and we would then meet, uh, I believe it's six-seventeen, it looks like. I would have that information put into the budget, and then we would go through the budget, you know, department by department to make sure that, um, it's right, or needs changed, or kind of preliminary. And then I believe, is there another one? I don't know if we had another one set. We were talking about it, but... 'Cause I'm, I'm leaving, I think I told you that, but I'm leaving on July tenth, and my staff is, we're trying to get this done before that. It's our fortieth wedding anniversary.
Which the thing we have to do is notify about the...
Do what?
Revenue neutral rate before the July twentieth, so our next big date after that, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And then we would come back and we can work, you, you guys stay at revenue neutral, so it's not like it's a big, big deal here. But, uh, 'cause we can work out all the details later, you know, as we work, keep working on the budget. Anyway, I just stuck this in there so we can kinda remind the department heads where they're at. The next ones you do not have here yet, but I, I've talked with, with Linda from formerly of the CIC, and with Michelle now, they're understanding how the CIC product works. Uh, these next three are from Ottawa County, and I had Heather there last year. We were talking about it last year here.
A different Heather.
A di, yeah, not this Heather.
From that county, not me.
Yeah, Heather at Ottawa County, yes.
Make sure they know that it's not...
She's the county, she's the county clerk.
You know, I didn't even, is it a drop from that?
It would've, it would've.
Yeah, well, this would be something you would wanna claim to, yeah, absolutely.
They may not want me to claim to it.
No, it's awesome, 'cause what we did is we took, and I don't know, Linda may have to help you this, Michelle. But what this is, I just put the Rodenbr, I just put three in here to kinda show you. The Roden Bridge, the County Health, and the Appraisers. And what, what these are, are the actual line items right out of CIC. So, you have down the left-hand side, the account format and the account description, and then you have the back years. So you have history, and depending on, you know, the last couple of years, there could be some discrepancies there. But what she did then is down in the left-hand side, this right-hand column of twenty-four totals, three million, three fifty on the Roden Bridge one. And they, she, see, each one of these have a code, like fifty-one-hundred, fifty-two-hundred, fifty-three-hundred, fifty-four-hundred. And each one of those codes matches the line items down here in the left-hand corner. So she, with Excel, just grouped those by the line items right out of CIC and put them in the format for the state it can, you know, how the state forms work. And then that way, you, the department heads, everything, I'm trying to get every one of them to do it this way, so that when it comes to you, it's, it's organized, you know? And then they can have whatever information behind it, the supports, you know, these line items. But this way, it keeps them with a little more detail on the line items by CIC, but it gives me the information down below that I can drop right into the budget. Does that make sense? Yeah, and we're gonna try to attempt to have, uh, I haven't talked to Michelle about this yet, but I just wanted to show her. And then, I don't think it's that hard. Heather and then probably Linda can help us, 'cause Linda said she knows the budget side of CIC pretty well. And so between those, Heather, the county clerk in Ottawa, and I think we can do this pretty easy. And once we get this done and set up, I think it'll be, going forward, it should be really nice. With just one more piece of getting it organized, so that when you get it, you're not, 'cause I was looking back at... This would be... Let's just, I'll just show you like, um, I was looking at this as well. So like here, um, each one, when they turn it, and you, and you, all of you three have done it before, but like when they turn it in, you know, now, and we probably will still use this sheet that shows like the, you know, the big things, like the wish list, the big things we talked about. But then, when they turn it in now, it just, they just, we just got it from all different types of information. And not that that's not important, and they can put it behind it, but I think it'll speed up, you know, me taking the information, putting it in the budget, helping you to see it. And if you've got questions like, let's just say on Roden Bridge here, uh, let's say line oh-eleven, oh-oh-five-two-eight-eight, sand, gravel, and clay materials. If you had questions on why was that so much this year, you would have the detail here above on each department, and then we would have how it's gonna look in the budget down below. Does that make sense? Yeah, I think it'll, I think it'll help. It worked really good at Ottawa last year. And it comes right, suppose, I'm not exactly sure how she did it, uh, out of CIC, but it must've been a pretty easy step.
It's very easy.
Yeah.
And that's how I started cleaning up lines up. I explored it and start...
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, they think it's important to...
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, so that's kinda the system. If you see something that's easier for you, just do it, you know?
This is kinda how I've been doing it, so...
This is how I, this is how Heather and I worked it out last. Heather, the county clerk, I'll keep saying that. Heather, the county clerk. Huh?
Not our Heather.
Yeah, not your Heather. At least I didn't call her Candy.
Maybe, so, yeah.
Yeah, and then I attached it on the back. Uh, I talked to, uh, Mark again up at Axon County. This is, uh, this one here is the twenty-fourth, so I wanted to show the department heads what it looked like when it's done. Uh, twenty-five, he's already started twenty-fives, so, uh, at Axon, I've got it also. But I talked to him the other day also about the receipt thing when I was here last time, and I don't know if that's any further on getting the departments, uh, to put the information in to the treasurer and all that. Because he said they actually, he, I didn't know he'd worked for CIC in the past, but he did. But he's the finance director there, and he, uh, he actually has, with CIC, each department can put their own information in, print a receipt, and then they get it in the right line, and then that receipt with their money and checks, cash and checks, goes into the treasurer. And that would probably be a lot easier than the worksheet that I had to show you, so I talked to him for a little bit. But I just put this in so that we can kinda use that, uh, going forward. As we talk about the next meeting, we would actually drop in, uh, the twenty-four budget request, which is the one, two, three, four, fifth column over, and that would be twenty, twenty-five's budget request. And we would drop those in as we go, and that whole column then, once we're done with the appropriations down below and the departments above, we would have a pretty good idea percentage-wise, uh, where it's at. Okay? That's really all I had kinda prepared for you, and then I was gonna meet with each department and go through this hand, each one of these will get this handout, and just tell them, you know, make sure we stay on the calendar, here's the dates, uh, here's what Michelle and you will be working out by line item. Does that sound okay? Do that, Michelle? Okay, I didn't wanna add, actually, 'cause I thought you had to work on it. And then, and then we would tell them how we... Okay, I didn't want to add extra, but I thought you had to work on it, and then, and then we would tell them how we would, now, I asked him a little bit, you know, this is actually posted on the website, he updates this as it goes, I don't know if you want to do that yet, you know, but, uh, he feels pretty comfortable with it, but at least if you have it, then we can kind of keep it, keep it up to date as we meet, or if something changes, then we change that number and go from there. Does that work?
Well, I want to make sure we're all cleaned up, that people are comfortable.
Yeah.
That's a lot of work, and it's really looking a lot better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Kudos to all the offices that are, this year, I feel like everybody's working a lot harder and all, working in the right direction.
Yep.
Once we get it cleaned up, we'll have something to be proud of.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good.
Anything else?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
And it's not to do this, but it might, um, so I've been working hard on it this time, and I wanted to make sure I understood all the revenue sources.
Okay.
The only thing we're seeing on here is property tax levies, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So the sales tax revenue.
Yeah.
The interest revenue, all that money is in addition to this.
That's right. Okay, and we can, we can, I used to have that, I had, you know, way back, I would show them all the differences, uh, before we went to CIC, I think it was.
And the reason I'm asking that is I think last year, you touched on that a little bit, but I didn't quite read into that, but this year, I said, you know what, now I'm understanding how you can stay revenue neutral, is because in Oshag County, our sales tax revenue is, went through the roof.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there are other avenues other than just property tax that the county pays their bills by.
And we, and we would talk about that for sure, because like, I was just at Jackson County, and there, see, the twenty-four budget there, twenty-two interest was, interest income was seventy-nine thousand, county one, and twenty-three, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that's probably somewhere like here or two, they have a little more cash than you do setting around their capital improvement by eight million, seven, seven million. But, uh, that really makes a big difference, 'cause there's still, we, we can't believe, on every audit report now, we're looking at the confirmations that come from the bank, and Michelle, Michelle and I talked about that even here with some of the bank accounts here, uh, because, I don't know, did you ever get that all?
Yes.
Still working a little bit? Yeah, so I, I'm gonna have to be point blank with you, when this is done, I'm gonna have to talk with the bankers in Oshag County, because when we send a confirmation as audit, we should have the signature cards, we should have the balances, and other information that we ask for, where, uh, there might be a bank account that uses your ID number, but it's not associated with the county. And none of that has been, you know, we, Michelle and I stopped, none of that has been coming, and, uh, so anyway, that's just something I need to work on on that side. But on there, I've been looking at, I get them in the mail, I look at every one of them, if it's anywhere under even two and a half percent on any of those confirmations on any audit client, I circle it in red, and that's when I scan it in my staff, and then we put it in as best practice that, you know, we need to be looking at interest, 'cause that is a, there's a lot of difference there.
There is a lot, right.
I told the bankers in Galway where I live, I took my hat off, I said, I'm taking my CPA hat off, I'm putting on my tax clerk hat on South Main, and, uh, you owe us about eighty thousand dollars to the city of Galway, uh, because you're only paying us point nine five.
Yeah.
And it should be paying us off the idle funds close to five percent, so he went to four-seven-five, so I felt, felt like we had won something.
Well, if you figure four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, that's two and a half mils.
That's right.
That's substantial.
Sales tax, you're right, sales tax is the same one, yeah.
So is there a way for us to have a printout of maybe the last three years of all the other revenue sources so that we can see, and then also comparing that with our fund balances, that shows all the revenue, not just the property tax?
Yeah, it's, most of those are in the bu, I mean, yeah, we can put a sh, work, there's a worksheet, we can, Michelle and I can work on that, that's not a big deal, but most of those revenue sources like that, that are anything over, you know, minimum school amounts are in the budget, you know, like, especially the general fund, they'll have the line items, it'll only show actual and last, and this year, to date, um, I can't remember, I think that's just.
I think we planned at eight or nine-hundred thousand last year, I mean, we had it in there, so.
But we had to get all that streamed out, because see, some of that went to sales tax and not to the JRO, and there were just a lot of things that was.
Right.
Uh, I think we've got that pretty good, pretty good shape, so we'll, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out something there and give you some information.
It'd be nice to know the true cash position, because if we've got these areas that have overperformed, I guess.
Yeah.
That might be ways we can maybe lower the mill level even more, because.
Yeah.
We have revenues coming in exceeding what we thought, and we could use some relief on the property tax side.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, anything else?
I'm, I'm meeting upstairs, county clerk, okay?
Okay, perfect.
And we've got bills left here too, so once we're done in here, if you guys want to in here as well, it's fine.
Yeah, I don't know, what's the last one scheduled, do you know?
Two-thirty, I think.
One fifteen. There's a couple that.
Well, this year I just offered this because I, there's, there's a lot of good training, if you sit down with them, even fifteen or twenty minutes, and like show them these worksheets, so that they can understand how to get organized, so.
Oh, there's, yeah, there's a lot of questions, I feel a lot, and that's good, I appreciate you doing that.
Take care.
Thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Yeah.
It's not a trouble. Don't fall off any tractors.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
We did that before.
We, you, and then both of you?
No, he did.
Oh, he did, so, I don't have a.
What's the date?
Today.
Did you look through it?
Yeah. Hey, Scott, wasn't it last year you fell off the tractor, or the tractor, was it last year the tractor wrecked you, or how'd you get hurt?
No, no, ice, looked on ice.
Slept on ice.
I'm still getting MRI on this, you know, it's not my hands, and I don't, I don't know, it's a bit of my shoulder and my, uh, like, right now, my hand is numb, uh, it's the, it's the muscle wreck, like a shoulder blade, and then that guy on his shoulder and my arm, and just, I just often, it just, I don't know, so I want to get it checked out, you know, I'm sixty-three, I'm old guys.
Yeah, they'll do this, too.
Yeah, 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 I'm, I'm an old guy, so you know, you know, it's situated circumstances, slow man, yeah.
Probably all the writer's cram from tax season.
You did what?
Writer's cram from tax season, or counting all your money, or something like that, some of those things.
Yeah, I don't do taxes, so that, I can't even add that one. Okay, he's up on.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
I still, I still see Hinckley Springs showing up on there from some places, I'm wondering.
Those should all be done, because all the.
There's still some showing up on there, I've seen that again, but I know we put the thing in, and I thought I seen one or two on there, maybe I was wrong. So they don't have a machine. Yep. So everybody in the courthouse is not, you guys aren't using what, Hinckley Water Spring anymore, are they?
I think we still have a ramp帘, just to get rid of our bottles that we've had already accumulated, and now we're continuing that service.
Yeah, I think that's the one, our singles at Roden Bridge.
Okay. And they would have one.
Nobody wants to, I would keep the black guy's number.
Yeah.
Is Roden Bridge.
I thought that was pretty cheap when I seen that, too.
Are they still using bottles?
I think so.
They could probably take ours and get rid of, use that, and then we can just, that's the only reason we still have the machines, just use up all, we got on hand.
You got something you want to say, sir?
No, I just, uh, got to my email finally, and saw about nine-twenty-seven, nine-twenty-two, somewhere in there, you guys, don't send me an email, someone can be in.
Yeah, well, it was Ranger's office for the R P test. Your efficient office already gave you.
All right, I just was like, well, maybe someone's talked about what they need to talk to me about, so.
No, you're fine, thank you. Did you see anything? I will move to approve paying the bills in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carries. Heather, floor here.
Uh, the only thing was the agenda for next week in the schedule, so I have on here eight-thirty and nine-fifteen, so I'm waiting to hear back about when this, it's an event for the seniors and the principals ask the parents to come to the. And then I got an email two days ago that they were adding on another meeting with the parents afterwards, so I won't get here as quickly as I thought, so.
Well, I showed the biggest one that I think will affect you, the financial policy review, and that's at eleven-fifteen.
That's what I got, so I'll wait till I hear back from her, and I can let Michelle know, and if, I'll try to give an idea when I think I'll be here, and maybe just have, if there's anything major.
Well, depending on when, 'cause we've set it at eleven-fifteen start time, but we're also having lunch at noon, so you're gonna have forty-five minutes of discussion prior to lunch, so.
So I'll find out how long's the senior farewell is supposed to be, and then whatever this other meeting is that I don't really think about, and how long it might last, so I can get an idea of when I can be back down here.
All right, Mr. Bailey, do you have anything to report on?
What time are we doing payroll on Wednesday?
That could be bright early, 'cause I will not be here, I'll be via Zoom or phone.
Yeah, same thing, I don't, if I can get the report tonight before, I, I don't know if I'll be down for that. It's just payroll, is that right?
Yeah, and if you could send that out, email that to us, or to.
I'll come down here at eight o'clock and we'll get them on here and go, so I'm putting eight AM.
Eight AM, Wednesday. Is there anything else that I missed?
I have one other thing.
Say it.
Before I do the other, my normal routine, and I don't know if anybody else is planning on this, but I'll go ahead and take the role, and if somebody else wants to add to it, they can, but I want to thank, uh, Melinda Reese for the years at the county. Uh, tomorrow is her retirement date, uh, I wish her nothing but the best of luck in her retirement, uh, and on a personal note, uh, she's been kind of a help to me on when I needed questions answered, I could go to her and get information, so I personally will miss her, but I wish her nothing but the best of luck moving forward.
But I would just echo your sentiments, she's been very integral to the day-to-day operations of this county that you will be missing.
I wasn't able to come to her party, I was gone, out of town, but I did send her a card and had similar sentiments and that, so.
Very good. Michelle, one last chance.
I will move adjourned.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carries.